One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, for being here. Roll call, we are short Mr. Ferris, who is excused with a family need. We were properly noticed, thank you Kate and Conrad. And before we dig into the meat and potatoes of the meeting, I would like to call for a moment of silence and reflection. Our country lost a great patriot and leader today. In fact, our world lost a great man today. So I encourage you to take a moment in silence. In member Ferris's absence, he has sent the following. Heavenly Father, we lift up the family of Charlie Kirk to you in this time of remembrance. We thank you for the impact of his life and the convictions he carried. Lord, surround his family with you, your comfort, peace, and strength. May your Spirit guide them, protect them, and fill their hearts with hope that is found only in Christ. In your name, Jesus, we pray, amen. With that, we will lead with the superintendent's report. Conrad?
Sure. This evening, social studies teacher Sharon Morgan is here with us and she has some students to present on their trip to England.
Hi, my name is Haley Mary. I'm a senior at Arrowhead, obviously. And over the summer, starting in June and up until July.
I'm Leah Haru, I'm also a senior.
I'm Ayea Piper, I'm also a senior.
I'm Alana Mabakla, and I'm also a senior.
Okay, so so this is our day one. So day one, we hopped on our flight, all of us preparing to be jet lagged when we get there. And so we landed in Heathrow in London at the Heathrow Airport. And immediately, we could tell that just it was totally like the atmosphere is totally different, like the architecture was different. And immediately, we jumped into our adventure. We had our tour guide Heidi, who we ended up loving. And one of the first spots that we went to where was Picnilly Circus, which is here, and then also the King's Cross Station, if any of you guys are Harry Potter fans, which I greatly am. I loved this. And then we went to the Art Museum, which Leah will talk about later in the slides, as well as the Covenant Garden, which is kind of like a nice place to walk around and sightsee and look at different shops. And then for dinner, we had bangers and mash, which is this picture up here. So it's sausage and kind of like a kind of like grits, it kind of reminds me of mashed potatoes. But I thought it was very good. And then we also had like kind of English pudding and dessert, which was awesome.
And then for day two, we went and explored Windsor Castle. It's, I was expecting it to just be like one castle, but it's like all these different like buildings connected together. And the architecture is something, obviously, you would never see in the US because it's so old. So just seeing all the different like architectural, like artistic like corners and it's like doorways, like everything had intention and it was just like very beautiful to see. And just like the nature as well, just like the sun coming in at like a certain angle, it just like felt like very disengelated. I felt very happy to be there. Then we had some, we looked at Buckingham Palace. We were only there for like five minutes, but it was so big, so beautiful. There's this big monument in the front of it and it was like golden. It was just like all the different statues, like in London, was just like so breathtaking. And just like seeing art just like scattered around the city was just like amazing. And then we had an Indian meal. The pan bread was so good, it was a big hit around like the whole group, I feel. There was so much flavor on this plate. It was just like something I never really had before. So I really enjoyed that as well. And then this guy was at Windsor Castle. And they were doing a reenactment in the foyer, I think that's what it was. But there's just all these different people dressed up in like different Renaissance outfits. And we saw this one girl like go up and ask for a photo with this guy. And all of us were like secretly thinking like, we want a photo with him. But like until she said, we're like, okay, just we'll all like go up there and we'll take a photo. But he was actually a really nice guy. He was super charismatic. And just like all the different people that we like got to interact with in England just like really impacted the trip a lot and they were all so kind. And you know, this is just one of my favorite parts of the trip because he was so funny.
On our third day, we started out by going to Stonehenge. And our tour guide was kind of like on our way there on the bus. She was like, oh, well, no one here ever wants to go to Stonehenge, but it's something all the tourists want to do, which is funny because she was just talking about how it's like so common there. But going to like a different country and having a different experience is just so cool for like us to see. We saw the real Magna Carta, we ate some British food. We sat at this really cute little cafe for a while. And we just saw like the beautiful farmlands that they have, which is like sometimes it's hard to believe that you're in a different country because it's like, it sometimes feels and looks so similar to where you are, but it's so different. And then Mr. Tower, this is one of my favorite parts of the day, told us to be very inconspicuous while wearing a very bright neon shirt. And then this was like just the coolest thing, there are all the cathedrals that we got to see when we were there. It's just like breathtaking. And like Leah said, there's no architecture like that there is here. And it was beautiful. And the whole time Haley and I were just like, oh, my gosh, we're at Hogwarts. Stunning. And I know, I personally love music. And on this trip was like the first time I ever got to hear an organ live. And I got to hear one twice. And I just kind of like sat there like five minutes after everyone else was moving around, I was just staring at it. It was like amazing, such a cool experience. It's just beautiful.
And then day four, we went to the Roman Baths. And that was really cool because they had like lots of different things about the history of it. And it all just looked really cool because like the others have been saying, like, it's so old. There's not really much stuff like that here. And that was really cool. And Leah and I definitely spent a long time with her. We had to like keep telling us like, hurry up, we got it for the next week. That was a, that was a really cool experience. And then we went to Anne Hathaway's Cottage. And it's not the actress, that's what I was thinking at first. Oh, I don't know who that name is for. And then people were talking about Shakespeare. I was like, oh, oh, okay. So that was really fun though, once I figured out who it was. And we got to go shopping at it in some free time. So yeah, it was really fun.
Okay, and this is one of my favorite parts. So we went to Oxford. As you can see from me and Alana, we're twinning today. And so I loved this trip. And actually, I learned something completely new that I never even knew before. But in Oxford, this is the place where The Lion, the Witch, and the Wardrobe was actually kind of the idea for it had developed there. Because, so in this photo, this is the actual lamppost from the movie, I believe. And then I don't know if any of you guys know the movie and the books, but this is Mr. Thomas. And this is how the author got the idea for his character design, because of the doorway, as we love in England. And then, so because I'm a Harry Potter person, when we went inside of like one of the Oxford libraries, like part of the parts of the school, they actually told us that like this window right here, and like it's like a big room and like has like vaulted ceilings and all that. It was actually part of the movie. So if you guys know the infirmary, that's, this is where Harry Potter's bed was. So we, me and Alana both took in a ton of pictures. But we also got to walk around. So this is, like here was kind of like the courtyard. And it was honestly just so breathtaking. There are so many parts where we're like, oh, my gosh, this is Hogwarts. Like this is just, it was, the architecture was amazing. And we actually got a really cool photo when we were in like a different courtyard of a rainbow literally over one of the buildings. So that's what that's all about. But it was just so cool, so informative. And then later that night, we had the best dinner ever. It was probably the most American-y one. But it was very, very good. And after like a long day of walking, like it was constant walking throughout the entire trip, which I mean, we all got our steps in, but it was so worth it. But we were so hungry and it was such a pretty little pretty restaurant. It was right down the road from our hotel. And it was honestly another amazing stop.
Day six, this was like our last full day we had. We went to the Tower of London, which was just like beautiful and really cool. There was a lot of history involved that I know Leah loved. I really loved it. And then we did the London Eye, which was also really cool. It's like huge. Like I was not expecting it to be that big. You could feel like, I think 20, 20 of us went in one of the thing. It was crazy. It's like huge. And then we just had free time after that, like go roam around. And I had like two cups of chocolate strawberries because they were just amazing. That was another thing was the food was awesome, Tesco's. And then we were all just like soaking it in, kind of like already sad that we had to leave the next day.
Yeah. When we came back, I totally missed Tesco. So it's like a grocery, essentially a grocery store. It's like a quick trip.
Yeah.
And then day seven, that was the day that we had to leave. It was bittersweet, you know, because we were all like, oh, it's me back. Like, no one's going to be thinking that our accent is weird here. But it's also, ah, lovely, you know, it's so cool. And we had to say goodbye to our tour guide Heidi. It was a sad day.
So these were my kind of highlights from the trip. There was this hallway just covered in graffiti. I mean, not even a hallway, it's like a tunnel, it's like a large tunnel. And just like there was art everywhere around it. And I thought it was just like so beautiful to like capture like this London culture of like people destroying their voices to be heard and like influencing others through like images. So that I like wanted to spend like a day in there, like I literally could. There's just so many different people's voices in this. I also love just going to like little cafes and like, you know, there's way more like like options for tea there, obviously. And I'm like, I don't really like tea in America. Like I should try to try out tea. And I got like all these different like, like fruit flavors and whatever. And my opinion was changed. I think the tea actually is kind of better in England. I think they like just take it better. I don't know. But Mrs. Lindmeyer, one of the teachers we went with, she kind of influenced me on getting one of these, like a British brand of tea. And I brought it home with me and it is better. So I don't, I don't know, maybe it's because I know it's from England, so I'm like, this is all fake. And then the Art Museum, oh, I love art so much. And I literally, I literally broke down crying when I walked in there. Because it was just like Yeah. It was a spur of the moment, like, oh, maybe we should just like walk into this Art Museum. And then I saw my favorite piece of all time in there. And I was like, no way that I'm gonna see this in person. And I just, I was like so moved going in there. I talked to one of like the guards there. I was like, oh, what's your favorite piece? And he told me about it. And we just kind of went back and forth. And he was just like the sweetest guy ever. So I really enjoyed the Art Museum as well. And then the Roman Baths were just like so, it felt like cut out like a little piece of like ancient Rome. I'm like, I thought we were in London, like what's going on? And it was just, it was just like all these warm tones and it was nice outside and it just like, it was really nice.
So then these were just some of the things. So I really liked taking pictures of pigeons. So yeah, and I got these sunglasses that are shaped like hearts. And then I was like, oh, I can like take a picture through it and it looks like a heart. So I did that quite a few times. And yeah, these are not all of the pictures that I showed there.
There's a lot of pigeon pictures.
So many pigeon pictures. And it was just cool, like I really liked the architecture. All the stained glass and cathedrals was really cool. And like all the little details in the buildings, like this, it's like it's some part of a building and it's like the shape of a cuttlefish. And I just thought that was really, really interesting. And yeah, there was just so many things. And yeah, there was a sign on like one of those courtyards. It said, keep the badgers off the lawn. I guess they must have a badger problem. Yeah, that was pretty much, yeah, it was a great experience.
Okay, and I honestly could have so many more photos on this slideshow. But I love like all of our chances to like kind of go out and like try different things. And like all our little like ice cream stops and like little cafe stops. And Alana's obsession with Coca-Cola. Plus, I loved the Salisbury Cathedral. It was huge. And it's actually like the first ever, like, or like the first Gothic cathedral. So it was just so pretty and so interesting. And the architecture and the designs were amazing. And I also love art. So that was a big highlight for me. And then I was then to take a picture in like the little Harry Potter infirmary. So that was one of my favorite parts as well, as well as King's Cross. And then I actually don't have a picture of Windsor on this slide, but I think Windsor, when I walked in there, I was like, oh, my gosh, I need a princess dress. That's like big, flowy, and I need to like run through the hall. It was just so, it was like, it was like I was walking through like the Renaissance, like a museum. You actually couldn't take any photos inside of Windsor. So that's why we don't unfortunately have any photos. But it was just so cool to like see like how, like how ornate everything is and how pristine it's kept that you can have so many people walk through and then just have it be so perfect looking. Like I didn't want to touch anything. I didn't want to mess anything up. So I just kind of like went like this and walked through. It was just, yeah, we honestly, I needed more time there.
Everywhere.
As previously discussed, Harry Potter was one of my highlights of the trip. I just felt like I got to live my childhood dream. Like I was Harry Potter, so that was really cool. I took a bunch of pictures there. And then I'm like a huge musical theater person. And just like being able to like see the whole theater district and seeing shows that I know. And I was like, oh, my gosh. I was like absolutely freaking out. It was so cool. Like I would see like Wicked posters on buses and Six. And I was like, this is amazing. And we saw the Globe Theater. And I was like, oh, my gosh, this is so cool. And then I'm like a huge Formula One racing fan, which is like a racing series in Europe. And I was like, the week that we were there, there was like a free fan event that was going on. And I didn't get to go because it was our last day. And we literally drove right past it. And I was like at the window, I was like, no! I was so upset. I was They know, they know.
Well, we had to see the cars, so that was
Yeah, I got to see like the actual cars that were racing. And like, like that picture right there, you can't see it, but they're super tiny right there. And I saw them with my eyes. That was amazing. And I think just like my highlight was like, I feel like I've grown like so much as a person and become just like, I feel more confident in myself and more independent after going through this. And it's just the fact of like, you're not alone. You still have like teachers to guide you and they're there with you. But you do get to have the experience of like going off and exploring a city by yourself with your friends. Like it's just such a completely different experience that I don't think you really get to have anywhere else. Like it's so cool. Thank you.
We also want to say thank you to the teachers who took us on this trip. You know, Mrs. Lindmeyer, Mrs. Morgan, Mr. Harriet, Mr. Tower. They were just like great role models for us. And you know, after a few days of, you know, like realizing that we weren't really rowdy kids and that we weren't kind of having trouble, they loosened the rails a little bit. I really appreciate that they trusted us to like, you know, walk a little bit. Like they're not town without like being washed all the time. So it was, it was a really good experience because of you. And thanks for listening to our presentation.
Clearly, you guys had a wonderful time. It looks like so much fun. Did you, along the way, have opportunity to kind of reflect? Clearly, Britain and, and the US have a lot of commonalities and a lot of things that are different. Where, where would you go with the kind of the compare and contrast?
I would say definitely like the architecture in the buildings and like just like those kind of aspects are so different. Like you can see commonalities in like food and whatever else. But the architecture and how the buildings were like oriented and everything were so different from America, at least from where we live. Because I mean, we don't live in any big city. And the parts of like England that we were in were like pretty condensed for the most part, besides like Stonehenge. But the architecture was just so ornate. And everything looked like it was part of a museum, even though it was just someone's house. And it was like, our houses here are totally different than the English countryside or even in the city.
Yeah, I think that for sure. And then also like, I learned so much, I feel like about their history. Like even more so like being able to remember it, just being able there to see it and like experience it. And our tour guide was like so amazing and just telling us everything. And I learned a lot about how their like government works and about like Big Ben and Parliament and how they name their bells, they don't name their towers. And I just feel like there's, our tour guide was just amazing at telling us like so much history. So she's great.
Kind of add on to that, when I was going into London, like some people were saying like, oh, like people are really nice in Wisconsin. So when you go to a different country, you're gonna have to like, people might yell at you. They might like yell at you, get out of the way or whatever. And they might be like rude to you. But personally, I didn't feel like that at all. I didn't feel like attacked at all. Like everyone that I met there was like really sweet and like just like the rest of us. So I really enjoyed the people there that I met.
Yeah, I'd say one thing that I, all I can think of is that the, there was like no air conditioning. No ice.
The ice was rough.
It's a bit of a culture shock, I guess.
I would say the ice was rougher than the air conditioning. Really, I slept with like, I had like a portable fan, so did you. And I kind of just like, when I was asleep, I would just like sleep with it like on me. So I was like chilling. But the ice took me out. When I was walking around for a full freaking day, eight to like nine. And I go to sit down and there's no ice water, it's lukewarm. I was actually like, oh, my gosh.
The thing that we were there was like unseasonably hot for London. Like the last day was like cold.
The last day of London, yeah. The rest was like eighties.
All the people who like lived there were like, oh, we're back to the usual. And we're like, thank God.
And they kept being like, oh, this never happens. Like it's never this hot. And we were like, what? Like I, one of the biggest things that was stressed in the meetings leading up to it was bring a raincoat. I used that thing once. Like literally once.
Thank you.
I have a pigeon question. Did you go to Trafalgar Square while you were there? Was there an older gentleman there handing out bird seed to get the pigeons to come and land on? That was my experience. It was fantastic. That was definitely a tourist thing. I was like, oh, that would be great for pictures. Okay, yep, my husband. Okay, great, let's do that. And then after, just as soon as I said that, I went, wait a second. And my hands are out, bird seeds in there, pigeons. Oh, wait. Rethink.
Well, thank you again. Thank you. Okay. We're coming up, yes. We have nothing on facility planning report. And next up, in fact, is public comment. Hold that thought for just a second. And just a reminder to anyone else who's there that this is our process is a signup for any public comments. Thank you, yeah. So if anyone has not signed up, please, please do so. Okay. First up is JP Mower. Thank you. You know what? I don't have any problem with that. The rest of the board, come on up. Sure.
We are Arrowhead students. We are students of the school, right? And we're coming up here to bring up a certain issue that we found out this year at school. What do you guys, the board members, know about the EPAS system that the Arrowhead administration has implemented here?
I don't know.
I heard it through my daughter.
Through my son as well.
I haven't heard anything about it. And I've read about it and I was kind of wondering what that is.
Okay, so what have your kids said?
That they're timed going to the bathroom.
It's all basically they log into their computer. It says, it's just like, there's a certain bathroom that they should go into. Yeah, like some went to one, but the bathroom was out of order. And he had to fish around and I think he got intercepted by a hallway monitor.
Just as a reminder too, in general, gentlemen, it's not a back and forth commentary in general. This is, you know, your, your public comment, we appreciate you coming and, and having, you know, a conversation with it. But in general, it's kind of a one-way conversation, if you will. Yeah. No, no, not at all. Pardon me? In the public, the public comments typically, you know, they are reserved for the board president, who can, you know, certainly open it up to board commentary if, if I would, if I would so choose.
But if the topic hasn't been posted, it really shouldn't be having conversations.
Correct. In, in general, this is, it's, it's public comment. You guys are coming to us to, to, you know, bring your thoughts.
So I talked to Chris Ferris, who is sadly not here last night due to family affairs. And he also has reported kind of the same thing as you guys, where you guys have not been informed by the school about this thing that has been implemented. Overall, as students, we find this like concept of this EPAS system very negative. I have already voiced my opinion to Arrowhead staff members and I feel like it has not gone well with you guys. But basically, I feel like this system just should not be implemented as it's unnecessary restrictions to like the students here. Because it's, like in many scenarios, it just does not work. So it sets certain parameters like on the students where if you try to go to the bathroom, you cannot go to the bathroom the next period. And these periods are one hour and 30 minutes long. And say you like drank a lot of water that day and you try to go to the bathroom, two periods in a row, you can't go. So it's bad stuff. Or say there's limits on you where it's you can only go to the bathroom seven times a week. And you can only go to the bathroom three times a day. So say you went to the bathroom three times a day. And then the next day, you went to the bathroom three times a day. You only have one more bathroom usage for the rest of the week. So therefore, you can't even go to the bathroom during school. And say you had something like the stomach flu, for instance, where if you really had to run to the bathroom, you could be like getting intercepted by like a hallway monitor. You could technically get punished for just having an emergency, you know? It puts restrictions on like basic human needs and that kind of stuff. Like I was voicing to Chris Ferris about this and you were saying that this was very not good, basically. Like unnecessary restrictions to the student.
Yeah, I feel like a part of it is we're punishing students who've done nothing wrong specifically. They enjoy their studies, some maybe less than others, but they're still here to learn. And we feel that it's just wrong to punish students who are trying to get to class and trying to learn. And maybe they just need maybe just a little bit more time in the bathroom. We understand that this was implemented so that students are taking maybe like seven, 10, 15 like seven, 10, 15 minutes to go to the bathroom when they're actually just in the hallways roaming or on their phone. We understand that, but we don't feel like we should punish students who've done absolutely nothing wrong.
Yeah, I say we can use this system for the students like that where they, I don't know, have like on their record like a blank deed like list of like infractions against just being out of class. Implement that for those students, but the normal student body needs to stay like unrestricted. Because as a cross-country runner, I like to be hydrated because when I'm running, I absolutely hate it. Because it gets to your head, you just feel bad the whole time, you know? It's just detrimental. And say I wanted to go to the bathroom and I wanted to get a drink of water as well. I know that that water is right next to the bathroom, but that time limit, seven minutes only, if you hit 10 minutes, they send a hallway monitor after you. And I don't know what the punishment is, but it could be something pretty bad. Okay, it's just not good, basically. And also from what I've heard, I thought that the Arrowhead administration should report to like the Arrowhead Board about this. Yeah, closing note, I thought that the Arrowhead administration should report to like this, like the school board about this stuff. And from what I've heard, definitely no words of it. So I don't know. I don't think it should even exist in the first place in that case. So, yeah.
Anything further, gentlemen? If not, it's JP and I'm sorry, Connor? Connor and? Asa. Okay, we, we very much appreciate you coming forward with your thoughts. Appreciate you guys taking the time to be here.
Next board meeting, we can show up if you want to. Maybe only at like one and a half days, at least. So there would have been more of us, obviously. I also have, actually, I forgot to mention this. I'm also a representative of the president of the Deca Club and um, oh, co-president of the Deca Club, just a very high-up student. And uh, she has also voiced her opinions against. I have the actual text. If I can get one of your guys' numbers, I can also forward the text to you as well.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Yeah, you can.
I'm not like you were saying that you only could go to the bathroom seven times a week, but that doesn't include, that's just when passing session, passing periods, whenever, right? Yeah, just seven or eight minutes.
Okay, uh, following public comment onto our consent agenda. This evening's consent agenda contains the August 13th, 2025 regular board meeting minutes, the bill payments report, donations report, and the personnel report containing resignations, retirement, and new hires. Is there any particular item within the consent agenda that a board member would like to pull out for individual comment prior to Member Angelie's comments on donations?
I did have a question on the, um, I, I would have emailed you earlier, Jeff, but I just saw it a little while ago and I didn't have time. Um, there's something in there about library books for $3,700 in there. Can you tell me what that is for? Just was it the purchase of books or?
Library books.
Is there any way that the school board can ever see what books are being purchased?
Yes, I'm sure Donna, Donna places all those orders. So if you reach out to Donna Smith, she can give you.
And then there was something about the AP, um, what was it, British History, buying some new books or ordering some books for that.
AP book?
Yeah. And I was wondering, what was that?
You're talking about the replacement books.
What is a replacement book? Where, what's?
If students didn't turn them in at the end of the year, then we charge those back to the students and then we have to buy new ones.
So the students are being charged if they don't turn them in? Okay, thank you. That's my head.
Thank you. So, uh, Member Angelie, if you would, uh, please review for the board the donations report.
Thank you, Madam President. We have two very generous donations this month to report. One from Greg and Natalie Revelly. Is that, do you know if that's the right pronunciation?
I'm not sure how you pronounce it, Revelle.
Revelle. Okay. Sorry, Greg and Natalie Revelle. Two Cyberhawks Robotics Program, generous amount of $5,000 and from Ace Precision Machining to Tech and Engineering Partnership Program, again, $5,000. So thank you very much for those donations. Madam President?
And I'll add, um, it's really great to see the partnership. I know my son's had a apprenticeship with East Precision, so it's really exciting to see how it works both ways in our community.
Absolutely. Thank you for, thank you for acknowledging those donors. We greatly appreciate our donors. So at this point, um, I would be looking for a motion to approve our consent agenda.
Make a motion. I'll second that motion.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. So we're breezing right through. Uh, there is no content for curriculum committee report, finance and building and grounds report, personnel legislation, policy committee. Uh, moving on to other reports.
Can I just interrupt for a second? Just for curriculum, I just want to mention that our next meeting is on the 18th at 6:45 and our agenda includes a trip to China update, 2025 summer school report, Act 95, uh, summer school discussion and review of education for employment and a review of curriculum review cycle. So it's a, as Chris Ferris would say.
It's a robust agenda.
I just wanted to mention that. So.
Thank you.
And I hope everyone comes.
That's on solid team.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chairwoman Hemmerich. Uh, are there any updates before we actually buzz through from any other of our chairpeople with regards to their committees or committee reports?
The only thing I would have for personnel is that um, there would be, and that's personnel and legislation, that there would be um, no meeting in October. However, the regularly scheduled meeting will be held in November.
Thank you.
That's it?
Thank you very much. Agenda item 10, other reports. Anything from our WASP delegate?
We've got the regional meeting coming up, uh, the first week in October, so I'll be attending that.
Thank you. Asa? Okay. And last but not least, Arrowhead District School Board Assembly. I'll just go over the four agenda points very quickly and board members can feel free to chime in. We had majority at this assembly meeting that was held recently, uh, with again, uh, a good attendance uh, from our feeder schools and um, a majority of our board and attendance from uh, from our administrative uh, team members as well. So thank you all. The first thing that we talked about there was continued discussion on consolidation. Uh, we did arrive at a place where a few different schools have agreed to come on board to have a financial analysis brought forward. The um, consensus was that we would develop a small team uh, and just kind of move things forward with that small, uh, small group of individuals. Um, we explored future meeting with elected officials. Uh, Member Blajay has, I think, reached out already, yes?
I've got to send it out.
Okay, uh, just in follow-up, uh, just to ascertain very specific content that is of interest to all participants in bringing together um, our, our senator and, and, and uh, local um, representatives. Uh, collaboration on cell phone policy. While we didn't do a lot of elaborative discussion on that, we were moving towards the end of our time together at that point. We did hear from, in fact, a, a few of the superintendents, uh, late in the evening approached board members uh, with just updates on the status of the cell phone policies at some of the individual feeder schools, suggesting that they were in fact in alignment with a, 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 um, a phone-free environment. Uh, and I did hear from Dr. Reese subsequent to the meeting who confirmed the policy that they have in place at Swallow School. Exploration of a shared contract for communication services for the Arrowhead District. In general, as we probably had anticipated, well, we put that content out there for discussion. The pushback was perhaps that if any individual schools were going to pursue something, they would do that individually. Not a lot of interest in pursuing that as um, a, 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 a group. But nonetheless, a good meeting as we continue to try to further uh, the communication and collaborative process between our high school and our feeder school. So thank you all of you that were there and um, uh, date for the next one is yet to be determined. Anything further that board members want to add?
I just heard something on the radio before I came here today, um, that there is some legislation going through in Madison about monetary incentives for school districts to consolidate. And you probably know more about that than I do, Lynn.
I haven't heard the most recent one. I just say they've been talking about it since.
Like really, they are working on it. So.
I think this was Representative Kitchens, I think, who chairs the education committee. He had a small tranche of uh, bills that I think he was trying to move forward. So hopefully, uh, there are a few things there now. So, good.
What are the, what are the concrete next steps as it relates to furthering discussions around the schools that want to participate in the trial, if you will? Are the business managers going to get together to handle that? Or is that something that we have a team put together to lead that committee? How do we want to approach actually getting that done?
I don't know that if teams have identified, been identified, but uh, my plan, and I talked with Ron Russ a little bit today after another reading that we had together. And he's going to, he's going to put some revenue limit worksheets together for like these two districts and then these two districts and these two districts to see if any of those make sense. And I was planning to do a full um, K-12 system revenue limit worksheet and just see where that lands as far as tax rate and tax levy, things like that. So, but I can't do that until probably the end of October, early November. That's when those revenue limit sheets will be finalized. So I'll take those final. Actually, they're not even final at that point. They're certified, but they've come final in May. And so there's minor tweaks, but it's the best data we'll have at that time and it's pretty good. So I'll pull that together into one district and see what that shows. And I'm not sure where we go from there. So, but that's our plan.
One of the suggestions uh, came out of Board Member Dan Furman at Swallow. He has a resource that he is promoting to, if nothing else, be involved in perhaps a final analysis of the data. That uh, you know, once Jeff does that, you know, his, his whole part and, and perhaps Ron Russ is involved in a portion of that. That uh, there's uh, an oversight piece that just says, yes, this is indeed accurate and uh, from uh, an, an outside source perspective, uh, gives it the stamp of approval so that in fact, nobody can come back and uh, and accuse anybody of making up numbers. Uh, so there's a prospects, I guess, of his involvement. But again, always the concern of uh, what his fee would be and who would be responsible for sharing in that fee.
The numbers are going to come right off the DPA website, so everyone can pull their own numbers too.
Yeah.
But is that, is that it? Is it just revenue limit combination at this point? Uh, yeah, I'll start with the revenue limit. I think that'll tell us the most because it'll have resident count for each district. And so we can add all that up and know what our full district resident count will be. It'll give us the total property value of, you know, it'll, actually, all those decades will add up to our property value. We already know. It'll add up the state aid amounts for each district and how that helps offset the levy. Give us a tax rate. So some of the basic components. And then we have to, you know, dig further from there. Like I think you need to analyze how much debt does every district have? What's their fund balance? What's their spend per student? Some of those type of things. That would be deeper into the, the next steps.
Okay. Um, moving on to new business. I am not aware of any. Sometimes no news is good news. Uh, future agenda items, anything from the board? Okay, if not, I would seek a motion at this point to move into closed section pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.85, 1 ACF.
I'll make a motion. I'll second that motion.
All in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you for being here, everyone. We'll convene in just a couple of minutes.